Board on Monday, August 17th at 7:00 PM in the Germantown Village Hall Board Room, and also can be accessed via WebEx. This meeting has been given public notice and according to its Sections 19.83 and 19.84 of the Wisconsin statutes in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action. Roll call shows all Village Board members except for Trustee Peiper, who is excused and may be joining us later. Ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is President's Report. I have nothing to report tonight, so we can go to announcements of forthcoming events, of public interest, committee and department reports, and we'll start with committee reports and committee chairs with Trustees Abel.
General Government and Finance met earlier tonight, and will meet again on September 21st at 6:00 PM. I believe that's right.
Correct, correct.
All right, thank you. Trustee Miller.
Public Safety will be canceled right now for September due to Labor Day, and if we do need one, we'll schedule and send that out, but our next one would then be October 5th would be the next scheduled one.
All right, thank you. And then Trustee Kaminski.
Public Works, we have an unusual circumstance as well due to vacations, so our September Public Works meeting will actually be on August 26th, which is a Wednesday, at 6:00 PM in this room.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything else of announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee or department reports they'd like to bring forward? If not, we can go on to the next item, which is Citizen Import and Public Appearance on Items Not Subject to a Public Hearing. We do have several different submissions that we had gotten.
I had an election update.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped right over you, didn't I? All right, well, we'll go back one, and we'll go back to election update for Village Clerk. I apologize.
Thank you. So I just wanted to report on the August 11th election. Thank you to all of the election workers that worked so hard that day. It's a 14-hour day for a partisan primary, and it's very much appreciated. And thank you to the departments that helped put it together on Election Day. There were over 5,000 ballots counted on Election Day, which was a 30% voter turnout, and of that 30%, 60% were absentee ballots. So that's quite a large number of absentee ballots for a partisan primary. Of course, that next election is on November 3rd, and we are receiving requests, daily absentee ballot form requests, and those will be mailed out mid-September. And in-person absentee voting will begin at the Village Hall on October 20th. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we can go to Citizen Import and Public Appearance on Items Not Subject to a Public Hearing. There are no public hearings on tonight's agenda. We did get some email submissions of public comment that I can read for the record. First one came on Thursday, August 13th, and it comes under the subject line of "Permits for Protests." Good evening, I just saw the news that TOSA will be requiring permits for protests. They will allow them to be at the City Hall or a police department building, not at private homes. Can we, as a village, do the same here? It would sure be nice. We really don't want any more protesters out in front of homes. Yes, we live right across the street from the police chief of Wawa Tosa and are pretty sure our neighbors don't want them either, including the residents on School Road 2. Thank you for your time, William and Carol Schneider on Berry Berry Circle. They also submitted another email on Sunday, August 16th, under the subject line of "What is the Village definition of a peaceful protest? Village Board and Village Administration, what is the Village definition of a peaceful protest? Does it mean start at 9:50 PM at night, having a generator, keyboard, drum set, and a microphone, start up loud music, and yelling into a microphone, or just yelling? How about blocking the whole street, driving on neighbors' lawns, using neighbors' yards as a restroom? Toilet paper in a private home, just having fun," in their words, not mine. I did see the police after they left clean up the toilet paper. Littering on yards and street, music did stop at 11:50 PM. They started to pack up the items, but still chanting and dancing in the street until after 12:20. All cars' horns honking, or all cars' horns were honking as they left our streets. Was informed that neighbors a couple of streets down could hear the horns going down County Line Road. When I called the non-emergency number to complain about what was going on, it was explained that we were sorry that this was going on, and I said that they have more rights than we do, and that is not right. How many tickets were issued? Will they hold up in court? There seem to be a lot of rights versus residents. Please remember, some people do work on Saturday, need their sleep so they can perform their job properly. We are for voicing your opinion, and not everyone will agree on everything, but at a proper time and place. Oh, by the way, is this the way we welcome new homeowners to the Village of Germantown? One new family did move on Friday, August 8th, on School Road. We have another new family closing on another home on School Road by the end of the month. Just so you know, the residents who live on School Road in Berry Berry Circle are made of young families, semi-retired, retired, and widows. Also, just so you know, not everyone on School Road, why is this happening? They didn't know the TOSA police chief lived in this area. Why has nothing been said about the protests on TV, radio, or newspaper until Chief Weber tried to bring it up on the Mark Belling radio show? All they wanted to hear about was the shooting in TOSA. Why does it take a shooting or someone getting hurt before it makes news? Also, if the police department or anyone is aware of this will happen in the area, we should be made aware of it. We knew it was coming out here, but not aware of it when it would happen. A comment was made the next day to me that I should have said something to you. My reply is, "We aren't stupid. We knew it was coming, just don't know when." We also know that you can't put time or place on protests like they try in TOSA, but you need to try to do something for the residents of the Village of Germantown. Also, just so you know, the police are patrolling our streets now more than ever, and that's sad, when they could be doing other things. We'll be watching the meeting on Monday night. Once again, William and Carol Schneider. We do also have two emails that we received from Jan Miller. I see Jan is in the audience tonight. Jan, do you plan to address both of these? Okay, then I will leave that portion up to you unless you want these right into the record.
It will be noted in the...
It will be. Your comments would be noted in the record as well. Okay. All right, then, for the rest of Citizen Import or Public Appearance, if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward for Citizen Import or Public Appearance, you're welcome to do so at this time. I would ask, as you come to the podium now, and state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Elizabeth Waffenschmidt. I live in Germantown. I've been a resident nearly 40 years. I've raised my child here, and now my grandchildren here. I love Germantown. I love the police. We're friends with some of them. We know some of them. But it is very concerning when we, as residents here, have to feel fear living in Germantown. And I have some of the same questions that was read off here, but one of the other things that I'm interested in is, it's hard breathing in this thing, under what circumstances does a peaceful protest no longer apply as a peaceful protester? And if they come into our neighborhoods, what rights do we have as citizens to protect our property, our lives, our children, our grandchildren? This is the first time in my life, and I'm 70 years old, that I am afraid for my children and my grandchildren. These people are coming into our neighborhoods. They are not protesting. They are here to destroy us. My background is also that I am a naturalized citizen. My parents brought us here from Germany to avoid becoming a socialist family. They raised us with all the knowledge that they had and the reasons why they brought us here. And a lot of the very things that they told us growing up are happening right now. You do not defend the police. That's the first thing they do. And then they want to put the military on your street, and it's not Trump. He's protecting us. But you take away our military, you take away our police, who do we call? Then we have to take care of ourselves. So what are our rights? Do we get our gun? Because if we call the police, they're not going to be there. Do we set up plans to protect our yard and our neighbors? Do we need to have civil people organize because we aren't going to have our police? We need to know these things. We can't sit back complacently thinking that these guys are going to walk through our neighborhoods and not destroy things, not tell us lies. All of us who have been here a little bit longer on this world, we understand this because we've seen it before. And I just want to know what our rights are, and if someone could possibly, in the Germantown, know what to say, give us a description of what a peaceful protest is, and also give us what our rights are, and a phone number, who to call if we feel fear because the protesters are driving their cars on our grass, defecating on us, our properties, pulling down our things at our yard. What are our rights? We need to know. And who to call? It's only fair. Because I don't want to be that person who is standing in front of my property, holding a gun, to scare off people and then get thrown in jail for it. That's not right. That's not what America is about, and we can no longer sit back and say, we have to let them walk through. The first thing Rudy Giuliani said when he became mayor of New York, first time someone steps out of line, throws a punch, throws a brick, they go to jail. Second time they do the same thing, he said by the fourth time, they didn't do it anymore. And that's what has to happen. We can't look the other way, because that's what happened in my fatherland, to speak. People looked the other way because they were hungry and needed money and couldn't live. If we look the other way, the same thing's going to happen to us. So...
Thank you for coming forward. Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward at this time for Citizen Import or Public Appearance?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sandy Dobrogowski. I live at North 105, West 14709, Wilson Drive in Germantown in the Heritage Hills subdivision. Good evening, Board and Mr. President. I have just a couple of comments tonight as I looked at what I think was the latest plat that was presented to us for review. I had not yet seen, I did not see the walkway, if you can help me with that. I did not see the walkway yet that was supposed to be visible between Lot 4 and 5, as well as the bridge that we talked about at the last meeting. I did see something that was called a 20-foot easement water main, but nothing that specifically called out the walkway or the bridge. The other thing I didn't see a change in was the stormwater ponds and the shape of them. They still appear to present themselves as the geometric shapes that we saw initially. And then the last thing I had was, in one of the sets of paperwork that was presented to us for review, it talked about the current dumping of the dirt, the mud, et cetera. I thought I read that it was supposed to be confined to Lot Number 2. I could not find that again to confirm, but that's what I recall. Reason I walked in a little bit late was because I was over there measuring the area that the dirt is dumped in, and approximately 215 feet by 350, which is over a 75,000 square foot lot. I'm just questioning the rights, if you would, that they have and how that fits in with the dumping permit that they received that specifically, I believe, called out Lot Number 2. So those are the only things I have to bring forward now, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming forward. Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward at this time for Citizen Import or Public Appearance?
My name is Jan Miller. I live at W-151 and 10297 Windsong Circle West in the Windsong subdivision. As, thank you for having me here, President Walter and Trustees. I'm here to make comments on the Veridian Resolution 52-2020, and I sent in two comments and emails, so it should be in the minutes, I would hope. And so what I said was, in our last meeting, going back to our last meeting at the Village Board on August 3rd, I made a public comment that Veridian Homes bought the Kinderberg Park land for $150,000, and one of the board members commented that we don't have anything to back that statement up. And what I did was, I did get the final purchase agreement from the school district. I did send that to all of the board members, as well as Steve Krecklow and President Walter. And then I added that one of my concerns was that the appraisal for the land originally was $690,000. The original offer for the land was $690,000, and the school district presented the Village Board with a notice of claim back on 7/30/2019 for the amount of $540,000. And I don't want Germantown Village residents to end up paying for this claim because it's associated with the Kinderberg Park land, and now it's owned by Veridian Homes. I don't want to pay for land that is now part of a subdivision, that I have very little to say about the design, architecture of homes, ponds, and landscape. And so the question becomes to either, maybe Brian knows about this, has the notice of claim been resolved? Is it off the books? It's been over a year since this was processed to the Village Board. Any comment from the Board?
No, but some of it may come up during the discussion for the actual development agreement under New Business Item E.
Okay. My second email, President Walter. We do appreciate that the Board has listened to the residents about some of our concerns regarding the same Veridian development. And I went through the Development Agreement, and I had some questions, and perhaps it will come up in the discussion. 5.04 Phases. It lists public improvements, and I wanted to know what the difference was between a public improvement versus an actual home. The second question I had is 8.01 Completion Date. The work required by this agreement shall be completed by the developer not later than one year after acceptance of this agreement by the Village Board, which would be, if it was accepted today, it would be 8/17/2020. And I thought that the agreement, the developer's agreement, was based on the date of rezoning 4/6/2020, or a year from there, 4/6/2021. And the other question I raised was 8.02 Default. It says, and I'm taking this out of context, the village may complete and take the title there too. So does that mean that it would be reverted back to A2? Or they would be actually, well, this is my version, defaulting on the public improvement, so nothing has been done? And then I have another concern on 8.04 Sunset Clause. The condition of this agreement shall terminate two years after the Village Board approval unless construction has begun or amended in writing by both parties. Again, I thought this was supposed to be done in one year based on 4/6/2020 rezoning date, which would be 4/6/2021. And then the, I think there is an error in the document. I could be wrong. 9.02 Approval Terms Correction. The last sentence, the date should be 4/6/2021, revert back to the original zoning of A2. I believe it says 4/16/2021. So to talk about safety again, to build on a couple of people that have spoke before, Sandy was talking about a permit that was provided to Veridian Homes. It's an erosion control permit. I believe I sent it to the Board. It stated 12/13/18. The cost was $60. The permit number is E, as in Edward, 38-18. And it does say, on item number 4, that the permit applies to Lot Number 2. And it is supposed to make sure that, you know, the road, the lake, the stream, the wetland, the ditch, the channel, or other water courses are located at least 25 feet from any downslope. There are other conditions. But I'm just wondering, A, does the permit go forever? $60? And now we have 215 feet by 350, approximately, a pile that's, I would say, about three stories high. And on my walk today, I saw a young boy, and this isn't the first time, running up the hill and running down. So it is creating a safety issue. There were no posted signs as of today, like no trespassing or anything like that. It probably covers about three lots, at least two. It is a hazard. What they did was they built a berm of the rock to alleviate anyone from driving up the driveway, but that doesn't alleviate anyone from running up the hill. We've seen ATVs, children, and it could be very dangerous. It is not our land, but it's next to your land, Kinderberg Park. So then I noted on the plat that was attached to this, again, that there wasn't, it didn't change from 7/21 with any of the improvements that they talked about in the proposal. I want to make sure that the dates in the agreement are congruent with the verbiage so that it cannot be misconstrued by either party, the village or Veridian Homes. So is it, it's supposed to be one year? I heard the Board say 4/6/2020. So, and I don't think that any, anything about, how shall I say this? I don't think that anything should preclude the beginning of construction for this because it's been in the works since 2018. So in conclusion, I want to hold Veridian Homes accountable for the dates that they need to meet, for any of the plat, the updated plat. It doesn't show any of the landscaping. There needs to be more information. I don't know how you can make a decision on this tonight because I don't believe there is enough information. Also, they sent over the HOA draft, which they've been working on this proposal for months, maybe a year. It's been at the 16 lots. How would they not know how big the lot would be or whatever to be able to create an HOA that would fit for this subdivision? So I will continue to work in the village, and I'll always try to preserve public land for green space and parks, and will monitor Germantown Village Board, Plan Commission, and Parks and Recreation for green space opportunities. We want to preserve the beautiful wetlands and green spaces that we currently have for generations to come. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming forward. Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward at this time for Citizen Import or Public Appearance? Anyone else? Then we'll go on to next item, which is Consent Agenda Or...
Make motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A through A.
A through A.
A through A.
Second.
As presented.
Motion made and seconded to approve Consent Agenda as presented. Any discussion on the motion to approve?
Don't say you want to...
No discussion? We'll do roll call, vote please.
Trustee Bond.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminski.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Wing.
Aye.
Trustee Zabel.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is Old Business Status of 2020 Budget Savings Plan, Resolution 41-2020, directing the Village Administrator to implement the 2020 Budget Savings Plan. To give us more information and background on this, I'll turn the meeting over to our Village Administrator, Steve Krecklow.
Thank you. I'll be very brief, just a few slides. First, very quickly, as I've done in the past, an update on the number of cases in Washington County, and you can see that the chart continues to go in the wrong direction with the number of new cases coming up each week continuing to grow, which can mean a lot of different things, and as we've talked about in the past, there's a lot of different ways to look at the data. But I think, one, the most important takeaway is that... But I think, one, the most important takeaway is that the COVID nineteen is still out there in the community and something that we need to be aware of and take reasonable precautions for. On the next slide, just an update on where we are regarding village employees and operations. Last month, when I provided the briefing, we had eleven village employees who had tested positive for COVID nineteen. Fortunately, all of them are recovered and back at work, and we have not had any new cases in the last close to a month now. We are keeping the precautionary measures in place in both police and fire departments, as well as village hall and other operations. So hopefully that continues to be the case going forward. Then turning over to revenue, we do have some, some positive news to report. On the first item, we did receive the reports from Germantown Hotels for their second quarter tax payments to the village. And based on that information, I'm projecting a smaller gap for the hotel tax. Previously, we'd been looking at up to a two hundred thousand dollar revenue loss. However, we are behind where we were last year, and we are behind budget. But I think that the, that after six months worth of experience, it looks like our revenue loss will be significantly less, more in the range of seventy five to one hundred thousand dollars. We're also continuing to see continued improvement in inspection and permit fees. Last month, when I reported, we were, I had that, the negative side of that range at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I've reduced that to a hundred thousand dollars, and we are hearing some conversations about some potential expansions of existing Germantown businesses and, and potentially some new business construction in the Holy Hill area. If, if any of those projects were come to fruition, we could end up hitting our budget targets for, for inspection and permit fees. So that gap could be down all the way to zero. Recreation program has not changed since last, last month. We're still expecting a loss. I think after we get through the registration process for the fall programs, we'll be able to take another look and update those numbers for the village board. Miscellaneous revenues haven't changed. And then finally, the CARES grant application, we did receive a check payment for that particular grant of the Road to Recovery of slightly less, it was three hundred and thirty four thousand, seven hundred and some odd dollars that we received. So that, that brings the, our overall revenue gap is significantly improved. Worst case, at this point, I think we're looking at a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in, in lost revenues, and if a few things break our way, we, we may be able to hit our revenue targets in, in most of the areas that we've been looking at. And then flipping over to the, to the budget side, the expense side, those numbers are, still look solid. Our salary savings, we have had a couple of other vacancies, and I believe we will achieve those salary savings. We are continuing to hold the equipment and maintenance purchases that we put on hold this spring. And I would say that as we get further along this year to the fall, one of the options, if the numbers continue to improve, that the village board would have, would be to carry those dollars forward and, and make those purchases, you know, over the winter. The seal coating program, you know, we did not do our seal coating this summer for three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. And that, again, if the numbers continue to improve, would be something that the, the village board could look at, at carrying over, and that is a program where we can do extra from one year to the next. And finally, the, the use of reserves is still there. Our rainy day fund is still present, and at this point, again, it looks like if, if things keep continuing in the positive direction, we may not, you know, need to dip into that rainy day fund. So hopefully, that will all, we'll continue to see these positive trends, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
Board? Any questions? No questions? Thank you, Administrator. Then that takes us to our next item, which is new business, starting with new business item A, Dinesville Historical Society Picnic License Temporary Class B Fermented Malt Beverage and Wine License for Annual Huntsucker Oktoberfest September twenty fifth through the twenty seventh at Dinesville Historical Park.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Next item on a new business is new business item B, Village of Richfield Utility Extension With us tonight, we have a representative from the county. The administrator, Mr. Shaneman, is here, and I don't know how we want to start this discussion, if you want to give us an overview, or just start with, with points.
You know, I think if, if we could, I'd suggest that we start with the village administrator from Richfield, Jim Healy, who's, who's with us, and I invited him, as well as the county, county executive, almost demoted him, but the county executive to come and speak tonight. As we've been having some conversations since the board approved MOU with Richfield several months ago, there were some questions that have come up about the, the villages, Village of Richfield's goals and objectives, why, why they were requesting water and sewer service from the village, but that Mr. Healy could address that, and County Executive Shaneman may have some, some comments as well.
Can I move this down a touch, just because our municipal orders are very volatile.
I, I think Ms. Tucker can scroll down. She's, she, she hears everything, so she'll, she'll scroll down on the screen.
Well, thank you. And thank you very much, Village President Walter and Board of Trustees for having me here today. My name is Jim Healy, and I've been the village administrator for the Village of Richfield for the last five years, but I've been employed by the community for the last decade. And in the audience is our village president, John Jeffords. What we're discussing tonight, and what we have been working on at administrative staff level, is approximately three hundred acres of land, which generally speaking is north of one sixty seven, east of one seventy five, and south of Pleasant Hill Road. Going back to the, the Village of Richfield's first comprehensive plan, which we adopted in two thousand and four, the community expressed a desire to see that area as the primary area that we would see industrial or economic development. Now, the village has had different nodes or areas of growth and industrial, but this has been one particular area that we have been focused on, which also carried through to our update in two thousand and fourteen. But since that time, we've also been setting rungs on the ladder, looking at different opportunity analysis, financial build outs, so that as a community, we can better convey to our taxpayers what, what the end result is going to be. You know, one of the, the very first studies we did showed, if we decided to build this out as a single-family residential development, that would mean your taxes are essentially going to go up. And so that was part of the policy decision and the board, the board's wisdom to say, this is an area where we want to focus. As you guys know, this is really a unique area. And I remember when the shops at Mayfair were being developed in Wauwautosa, Mark Belling had a column in the Daily News, and it said, "The next area on the map is the Holy Hill Corridor. That's the next place to go." And, you know, sure enough, he was right, and from the village's perspective, the growth that you guys have been realizing in Germantown has been phenomenal. Those places employ a good number of people who hopefully will choose to live in this area, hope to go to our gas stations, hope to eat at our restaurants, hope to use our facilities on both sides of the interchange, and I think that that's good for everybody. And at the, I'll say, at the core of what we're looking to do is we're trying to create what I think could be a regional-type partnership that could be a model for the rest of the state of Wisconsin. Franklin and Oak Creek had a similar project plan development for the development of their Twenty Seventh Street Corridor project, and I really see this as being no different. We have an opportunity to create a bookend at the southern end of the county and really create a center of gravity for lots of great family-supporting jobs in our area. This is what we're talking about here. The Village of Richfield is thirty six square miles, and we're talking about three hundred or so approximately. This has not been without controversy in our community, that's for sure. If you guys read the Daily News or pay attention to social media, this has been something that's been very hotly discussed for a number of years. But I think one of the things that we have done exceptionally well with our taxpayers is communicating to them what we are and are not looking to do. And right now, we're at the, what I'll call the courting phase, although we're probably trying to win a little bit more affection than you guys are from us. But we're not putting shovels into the ground or anything of the sort right now. We're trying to make, I guess, a decision as to whether or not it makes financial sense for us to partner. For your ratepayers, that means they get a reduced rate, because we're diluting the base with different users. For our taxpayers, it means that the assessed value of our community will go up, because we'll have new development. So I really think that there is a win-win here, and politically speaking, I believe that our boards are very similar philosophically. What we're trying to do is create a situation, I believe, where whatever the deal is, whether you're on your side of forty one or our side of forty one, it's the same. We're not going to race each other to the bottom. We're not going to sell the farm in order to get the deal. The Village of Richfield has waited long enough for, to even, I guess, begin discussions regarding a TIF district. So I think if that shows anything, it's that the Village of Richfield is ready, but we're also willing to wait for the right opportunity to come. And for us, it has to make financial sense. We know with our infrastructure feasibility analysis that the amount is a little over two million in order to bring the utilities here. And I guess our engineers are meeting tomorrow to kind of go over some of those, those numbers. But as I understand it, the board and the Public Works Department, and at a staff level, you guys will be looking at putting out to bid, unless it's been out to bid already, your water tower. And as one of the alternates with this, it's whether or not to raise it a certain prescribed height in order to service this area. So I recognize that you guys have some, some very big policy decisions to make over the course of the next sixty to ninety days. I'm grateful that you guys gave me the opportunity to come here. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you guys have, but I know our county executive also wanted to say a few words regarding good governance.
Any questions?
The county is that speaking next?
I'm sorry?
The county is that would like to make some comment. Is he online?
No, no. He's right in front of you.
Oh.
Maybe. At a different time, you could shake his hand.
Yeah.
Do you wish to give the county executive a chance to talk and then ask questions? Is that what you'd like to do?
Yeah, that's true. I'm assuming that he pointed out that he would like.
Okay, then let's do it that way. Thank you, Mr. Healy.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to come and talk today. If you know anything about me or monitored my campaign over the last six years as county administrator, you know one thing, and that's I'm an advocate of good government, smaller government, more pragmatic government, and working together. And I've really tried to do that throughout my tenure at the county and even before that. I, I was the village administrator in Richfield when those boundaries began to come together and looked at a pragmatic approach to where development was going to happen in Richfield. And so I can tell you firsthand that it's not a matter of if that development will happen, it's a matter of when and how, and whether you're a partner to that development or you're not. Why is that important? It's important because there's certainly going to be development projects along Highway forty one that happen, and that our developers are going to look on both sides of that interchange. And it's happened already, we know that. The question becomes, are you partner to every one of those conversations, or are you not? And certainly, if an arrangement like the one you're talking about today happens, you certainly are partner to those conversations. If not, it could certainly be much more adversarial in nature. I don't think anybody in either one of our communities wants to see that happen. In fact, I know, as, as an elected official myself, you represent something much more than village government. You represent a community at large. And I can tell you that that line, that's north and south delineating the line between the Village of Richfield and the Village of Germantown is just a line, because there's a lot of people on the west side of that line who are part of your community, who come here for school and work every single day. A lot of members of your school district live on that side of the line. So I, I think it's really important for our community as a whole, and I don't mean just Richfield and Germantown. What I see happening in the next several years, as we come off of this terrible COVID, is a lot of businesses are going to start coming back from overseas. I'm sure some of you are very familiar with what's happened in the supply chain. I anticipate that we're going to see a lot of that coming back, and as was mentioned earlier, the, not only Highway forty one, but the Holy Hill Corridor itself is the next logical spot. One of the initiatives that I'm looking at as county executive is not just this interchange, but what happens from County Highway Q all the way up to County Highway sixty and that entire corridor. And I think without partnership of the variety that we're talking, it's going to be a lot more difficult for all of us. As I said on the campaign trail, economic growth is either going to manage us, or we're going to manage it. This provides you an opportunity to do so in a partnership rather than opposition or adversarial. So I ask you to please carefully contemplate what you're going to do, and I trust the wisdom of this board to make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Baum.
Does Richfield have a master plan of what they're looking to do, how much industry they want, how much residential they want, how much apartment complexes, a master plan of where they're looking to go? We've got what we have is the twenty fifty plan that we are redoing right now. I'd like to see your plan side by side with ours to see how they mesh.
Sure. Thank you, Trustee Baum. We do have a comprehensive plan that we adopted in twenty fourteen. It's scheduled to be revisited in twenty twenty four, but we have, I'll say, several supplemental documents that we have provided to your village planner, Mr. Rutzloff, for his review. That shows a breakdown of general classifications and usage on the property. From our perspective, and just talking very broad brush, we're looking at office and light industrial in this area. I, I don't believe that we have an appetite for retail in this area. We have an area that serves retail in our community, which is our strip mall area, and we don't want to take away from that. Plus, from speaking with Administrator Crecklow, excuse me, he told us that that was one of the concerns that this board had, is that we would not be directly competing in terms of overall land uses. And so we are looking at strictly office light industrial for this area. There may be a mixture of side-by-side homes on the northern part, but I would say, as much land as we could paint as that type of a land use, that would be what we would be looking to do, sir.
We have spent considerable amount of money bringing our water and sewer to the intersection of County Line and Golden Dale. Are you going to offset some of that cost? What is, what's, have we started talking financials of what potential financial investment you're going to have?
No, sir, we have not. Administrator Crecklow and I have had discussions very preliminarily about types of cost shares. In July, we recently engaged Ellers, who I know you guys use for your TIF financial advisors, and we provided some information to Baker Tilly Virtial Kraus, your accountants for public finance, in order to look at what the rate, what the rate decrease would be for your users based on an estimated flow per day. But in terms of, have we gotten down to the nitty-gritty of who's paying for what? No, sir, we have not.
Okay. And I do. And I do know that the water tower did go out with an add option to raise it up. My understanding is that add option is 100% your cost. We're not going to pay for that because we don't need it. So that is something that I'm holding on to dearly. If we get our, if we get this COVID stuff ironed out and we can finish our 2050 plan, one of the things that has always held me back from this is where are we going and how much industrial do we want to have? And we've only started. We've just started, this has been, what, two years that this has been operational? And--
A little over.
What?
A little over.
A little over two years. And we've got people coming left and right. I'd rather see our businesses fill up and utilize that and support that service that we've brought to it before we start giving that service to other people. So that's a bias that I have, that's a position that I have when I'm looking at this.
And I can certainly understand and appreciate respective. Thank you.
Trustee Wing.
I can remember, I can remember years ago when we had President Kapinski, and we were negotiating with Richfield when you were looking for police services. And the negotiations were terrible. I was just talking about it to Kapinski the other day. At the last minute, you went with Washington County, even though we continue to give you mutual services and as you grow in this area, our police will continue mutual services. It wasn't a good experience. I remember, I was here. Then we had a fire contract with the town of Germantown. We wanted our fire department to take care of the town, they're right inside of our boundaries. And your fire department came in, and there was some stuff going on there as well that I didn't appreciate. And, well, the town gets their fire service from Richfield. During these discussions, I've called two of your trustees and left messages for them, and they haven't returned my calls. When you come here tonight and tell me that you're in the courting phase and you don't return my calls, past contracts were when terrible, past negotiations did not point to you wanting to be a partner but competing against us, you have a strange way of courting me. Very strange.
Well, if I could address those comments. For one, just as Administrator Krecklo doesn't speak for his elected officials sitting up here on the dais, I certainly don't speak for my elected officials. I can't speak as to why they're not returning your calls. Know that Steve and I, however, for the last four months have been having weekly calls at 1:30 every Tuesday without fail. Either I will call Steve or Steve will call I. And I think that, from our perspective, this is not a period of time when Dave Shornak ran the village of Germantown. This is Steve Krecklo. I think it's inherently different. I think the way that you guys communicate with the public are different. I think your engagement with your residents is different. And I would hope that you guys would think the same thing about me. I'm certainly not Toby Cotter or Josh Shoman. We may have very similar political bent, but we're not the same person.
Well, now we're talking. Now things are different. Maybe we can renegotiate a police contract. Maybe we can combine our fire services and ways to save us money. Maybe there is things out there to do. But I'd also like to point out that I have constituents with a lot of land, and they want to develop it. And whenever we do one of these TIF districts, we have people from the county and the state coming and talking about partnerships. Well, you have set up a program of TIF where we all compete against each other. And if anybody knows my history, you know I'm not a TIF guy.
Well aware.
All right. This is creating division among us because we'll have somebody come to us and say, give us a million dollars or we're not coming to your community. Richfield's giving us 800,000. And this competition is destroying municipalities. How would my constituents and my landowners benefit when just south of here, there's masses amount of land undeveloped, they're hoping to sell, some of them have it on the market, they would love to see what you're looking for, light office and industrial? And I'm looking to build it there. If I give you our two best tools of sewer and water, how do I compete when this same industry that you're looking to bring in comes to us and says, well, Richfield's going to give us this, or I can get land cheaper at Richfield? Business-wise, it just doesn't make sense that I'm going to give away my best-selling point to someone that the state and the county has set up as my competitor. I don't think we should be competing. I think we should get rid of a lot of this TIF nonsense so we're not competing and grow Also, the water is a natural resource. We have many residents, as we're using the water, their wells are running dry. Now I'm going to an area where we had problems with this in the past. I'm not an engineer with water, so maybe this tower won't affect them. Art will know better than I, but I've had residents, my constituents, whose wells go dry. Now I'm going out there and telling them, not only are we building a water tower, but we're building it 20% bigger for Richfield. Who's going to compensate them when their well ran dry? Because I'll tell you, nobody compensated my family when our well went dry. No one compensated trustee Peepers' family when her well ran dry. They all ran dry with expanded municipal water systems. Also, there's, we've done studies where we're going to eventually run out of our natural resource of water, and then we've got to hook onto Milwaukee. And if you're hooked on us, you're going to be hooked onto Milwaukee as well. People want to push that deal out as far as possible, and you can imagine why. So how do I sell to my constituents that we're going to help you build faster than the areas where the farmers and landowners are coming to me? And, oh, by the way, we're going to be going to Milwaukee water sooner than expected.
Sure.
First of all, on behalf of the county, the county doesn't advocate for TIF. I appreciate your, how much you detest TIF districts, and I've advocated myself with Senator Strobel for exactly that, who I think maybe doesn't detest them quite as much as you, but certainly is no fan. What the county does believe, and I, speaking as county executive, you put it in terms as if Richfield's not going to do anything should you not partner. I know enough about the community to know that development's going to happen on this quarter regardless of whether the village of Germantown participates or not. Okay? So to negotiate as if you're in a silo is a pipe dream itself. Yes, it's going to create some competition, undoubtedly, that's what happens. Our well's going to dry up, potentially. I appreciate the rhetoric. At the end of the day, the question is, do you want to be in a position as a community, as a corporate entity, who's able to know and have some leverage in the conversation as to when development happens? Or do you not? Do you want to be in a position where you're working with people who are literally within your own school district, or do you not? If the answer to those is no, because we want to be protectionists of our own side of the line, then do that. Let them do their own thing. But most certainly, you're going to see develop along 41. We've been seeing it for quite some time, and you will see it for some more, certainly. I'm an advocate of development all the way up to Highway 60, and I'm an advocate of doing it in a responsible way. It's why I like to see what Richfield's attempting to do by having a narrow scope and not showing some grandiose plan. And I know that you're working on your 2050 plan doing the same thing. So I would ask you to really try to take a step back and contemplate this as, I understand all of the harm of the past, but look at this as an opportunity to have a lens inside of what's going to be happening on both sides of that line rather than being adversarial.
The only thing that I would add to that is, a lot of your constituents have large tracts of land. I think Richfield is designating this area for light industrial and warehousing, period. Correct?
Office and light industrial. Yes, Mr. President.
Other lands that perhaps your constituents own or have property rights to, it isn't all going to be industrial, light warehousing, or any type of industrial at all. It could be, it could be residential. It could be a commercial component or professional. It could be a lot of different things.
Certainly.
We definitely know what they're looking to develop up in this area, and that kind of partners and goes hand in glove with what we have similar on the opposite side. I would rather have insight into what's happening across the street rather than turn my back on it and turn around someday and it's bigger and better than what we thought it could be, or it doesn't match or meld at all as to what we wanted our plan to be. So I like it for that idea. Am I looking to give away our resources? No. Am I looking to partner and try to grow an area that we know is going to develop so that it's done in a responsible, constructive, and a well-planned way? Yes, that's what I'm looking to do. And if it means that we need to cross some borders and share a few resources to do that, well, I'm willing to look at that opportunity and see how that works. I'm not saying yes to anything right now, but I'm not saying no to anything either. I'm wanting to know more information so that we can see where the pluses are, we can see where the benefits are, and we can talk about where they're not. And hopefully, between all of us, we can work those things out. Trustee Zabel, looks like you had a question?
Either that or a comment. After you've done, I was sort of listening to you and I sort of lost my train of thought there for a second.
I've put you off the track many times.
But way back when, when, I'm sure when Josh was there and the town became a village, become a village, you were required to have municipal sewer and water. And because you got around that for the simple reason of planning for sewer and water. Well, while you were planning for the sewer and water, what were you going to do or what did the village propose at that time to provide sewer and water? I'm sure, I don't remember anything about sewer and water coming off of, coming from us.
I can answer that, trustee Zabel.
Sure.
The village of Richfield was able to work with the state of Wisconsin on not having sewer and water because we have a private system in a subdivision called Reflections Village. That's how we were able to, I'll say, get around the density requirements and the sewer and water requirements. We were actually the first municipality in the state of Wisconsin to be allowed to incorporate without sewer and water. And that's in part, I think, because of our deep understanding of the village's hydrogeology. We've been studying it for close to 20 years now. We have testing wells in every quadrant of the village, and we monitor the drawdown level of these wells. And so to address trustee Wing's concern regarding some of his neighbors or constituents who might be losing water as a result of development, that could be something that you could provide to them as a potential resource to have some quantitative information about, about how much and when your water is actually either rising or falling, because of course, it fluctuates quite a bit throughout the year.
Right. Does it, my memory right, reading something out there, your water table was falling up until last year or the year before that, then a lot of tables seemed to start to come back?
We are approximately four feet above our groundwater table levels from when we first started 16 years ago. So they've been progressively, I'll say, steadily increasing over the last several years.
Because when we do this, we're going with a deep well, which means we're going down below the rock. This will be well number seven underneath, below the rock? Maybe four below the rock? The study that was done by Southeast Regional Planning sort of went against us on that. Matter of fact, they wrote us out that we shouldn't be doing that, and we should keep that offer where it is, and matter of fact, tie into Lake Michigan water, which would mean either going to Milwaukee Met or running another line through Drafton or someplace else, Suboiun or whatever, and coming down here. Which is something like, we prefer not to do. And matter of fact, we wrote a letter to Southeast when they put their document together suggesting that we were not going to follow the train of thought and do what they recommend. So now, as we do this and we being asked to provide water to other places, if you have already a master plan that would allow you to do a minor sewer system or a minor well system for office in other places, why wouldn't you want to do that? To me, that would probably be a cheaper way of developing than try to do this, use the other sewer and water system. If you can do your own mini sewer system and your own mini water system, instead of stay within your guidelines of being a village, why wouldn't you go ahead and do something like that?
Well, thank you, trustee Zabel. As a part of the village's infrastructure feasibility analysis that it went through and adopted in November of 2019, we did look at the costs of developing our own system. And frankly, at 40 million dollars, it's not something that we're willing to entertain. The system that you're describing, which allowed us to incorporate in Reflections Village, is very different than what would be required in order to develop an office industrial park with this sort of same type of density. So we would necessarily need sewer and water service from either Germantown or Jackson or Slinger in order to accomplish that.
Now, is this system looking at the map that's up there? The system that you're talking about, it should almost border up to this. Would we be connecting to that system, or would they be connecting to this?
We, trustee Zabel, would be your client. So we would essentially be no different than a business to you guys. And that was another point that we heard from Administrator Krecklo that was important to you as the village board, is that you guys were the ones who were in charge of the maintenance. I see Larry in the back. And that way, you guys were the ones who were, in a sense, managing the system for us on our behalf.
Now, I was more concerned about the subdivision that you talked about that had its own private sewer system. The boundary that's there goes right up to that property, I believe. Does it go to the north?
It does not. This is the boundary here.
Right, on the north end of that property, isn't that where that subdivision is?
No, sir. It's down--
It's out there? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Administrator Krecklo.
Just wanted to mention that as we've had conversations, there have been a number of questions coming up about the impact on wells, the availability of water, et cetera. And Public Works Director and I have had some conversations about that. We have a consultant who's been working with us on the water tower and the well that we're constructing, and one of our thoughts was we'd invite him into a future village board meeting to brief the board and answer any questions on those specific topics. So we are planning to have someone in to help address those more specifically.
Trustee Baum.
What is your timeline? What timeline are you looking at? Are you trying to build this development next year, two years, three years, five years? What's your timeline?
Well, when we first initially set off on this, my goal was so that we would not miss any sort of a 2021 construction season. I know the village of Germantown is looking at reconstructing Holy Hill Road from 41 going east approximately one mile. We were, I guess, a part of your grant application to the state of Wisconsin issuing a letter of support for a two-lane divided highway in that area. But we were hoping to, as you guys were reconstructing Holy Hill Road, to concurrently start seeing development in terms of moving the utilities our way. I should preface that by saying that it would all be tied to having an end user. We certainly are not going to be taking a build-it-and-they-will-come type approach. We will do as the village of Germantown does, is a pay-go TIF.
Yeah, but you, the timeline is going to take you to get the well built, to extend the water across the interstate, to build out the infrastructure of this business park. You're trying to get that all completed in 2021, or you're trying to start in 2021?
The village of Richfield at this time would just like to stub out the utilities to the property boundary lines and get as close to the property as we can.
During 2021?
That's correct, sir.
And then, okay, so then when would you want to start populating your park?
When the-- When the private sector decides to approach us for development opportunities. I mean, as I had mentioned before, what we need to find is kind of the nexus point of where the increment generated from the TIF district will pay off the note and not a moment sooner than that. Because that is one thing that we have heard from the village board is it has to pencil out for us.
Okay.
If I could, Administrator, if I could just add, from Germantown's perspective on the timeline, we are designing right now for Holy Hill Road reconstruction, hopefully in 2022. And I think at that point, we'd want to look at sewer and water underneath it so we weren't, didn't have to dig it up at any point in the near future. So I think from our perspective, with Holy Hill and Rockfield also needing work in the very near future, you know, we would want to look at sewer and water extensions along those two roads sooner rather than later as well, even aside from this arrangement with Richfield, which I think is one of the reasons, you know, a lot of things have to align for things like this to work. And that is, I think, one of the reasons why it does have that potential.
Further questions? Comments? Well, I look forward to future discussions and information coming forward for us to consider. I appreciate you gentlemen coming tonight. Mr. Healy, County Executive, President of Richfield, thank you for spending time with us tonight. And we look forward to see you in the future and as we go forward through this discovery.
Thank you for having us.
You're welcome.
Glad to see that we're not the only community that has technological pickups with what we have.
It's better than it was. It used to be a big island in the middle. It's been scaled down. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good night. Next item under new business is new business item C, Resolution 50-2020 Safe Build Professional Services Agreement for Building Permitting and Inspection Services.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded discussion. Trustee Baum.
Okay, I have encountered this organization in numerous locations and what, I heard you guys talking about, because I came in halfway through this at GGF, what the people on the other end experience is a lot of frustration. Yes, we don't have to deal with the state and their 12 to 16 week lead times, but we have frustrations with, these aren't people who are part of the village and we can't get cooperation from them. There are plans, we were doing a project in West Dallas, the plans were set up at Green Bay. And the person comes down from Green Bay, sits in the office, and then drives them back up to Green Bay, and then they assign them out to people in Green Bay. How we sit and negotiate and discuss the plans, here's what you want, here's what I believe the code says, we can't do that with this company. We haven't been able to do it very well with them. So Dan, at the earlier meeting, you asked what's going to change? Frustration on the customer side. That's what I've been through, that's what my staff has been through. Now granted, it was with select people. It seemed to be always the same people, but we always ran into that same, those same three people at different communities.
Are you talking about the inspection services themselves?
No, I'm talking about the plan review process.
Right, but aren't we on C?
We are.
We're not on D.
C includes the plan review services, though.
Okay, well, D is actually the commercial plan review.
D is the fee schedule.
Well, that's approval of us. We have to adopt the DSPS fee schedule.
Yes, but Safe Build, Item C, Safe Build, is the reviewing people who review the plans.
Yes.
And I'm telling you what-
It's all part of the same package.
What we've experienced with this company and what our customers are going to experience also is a level of frustration. You talked about earlier, I can't talk to somebody, I got to have somebody come in and we're going to have harassment cases, that kind of thing. We couldn't talk to anybody. We couldn't find the person that we had to talk to to get answers on our projects.
Okay, so-
So when you're referring to, would you be willing to go with the inspection services and not the DSPS commercial plan review?
If I could just, first of all, I don't think we can change what's before the board to that extent as far as the contract.
Well, we're voting on two different things, so if-
They're both together.
Then they should be on the same line. We're voting on two different things and everybody's telling me they're the same.
One is dependent on the other. One is the contract and the second is, it's the ordinance.
So you're telling me that if you don't go with the commercial plan review, it's a deal breaker for the inspection?
We would have to withdraw the item and go back and enter-
I don't know why that would be a deal breaker.
Because-
Just another source of-
No, I'm paying this company to review the plans instead of me going to the state. Okay, if I don't go to this company to review the plans, I don't need their fee schedule. So the first part is saying I go to them to review the plans. The second one is what's their fee schedule going to be?
For the plan review fee schedule.
Plan review.
But there's a total separate point of just inspection services for the village. That's totally separate. I know they want it included in the same deal.
No, that's part of C. Inspection services is part of C.
Right.
Do you want them to do the inspection services and the plan reviews? Yes or no? If you say yes, what are they going to charge for? Item D.
That is correct.
But the, does the commercial business have to go with them or could they still go with the state?
Well, it's part of their proposal. So I guess if we're talking about parsing that proposal in some manner, we would like to be able to discuss that with them. Probably not in this particular moment, but with that said, Dave Hendricks, representing Safe Build Wisconsin, is here this evening and can respond to that concern that you raised, Dave. Because I think it's legitimate, we haven't discussed at this point where the plan review services would be conducted and how that might have a bearing on our-
And granted, they have a, let's hear from Dave and see what he has to say. Granted, they have the ability to hire on fire better than the state does, and that's the problem with the state, they won't hire enough people to review these plans.
Thank you. And I hear some of your frustration before, I'm Dave Hendricks, I'm the Operations Manager for Wisconsin. And that's one of the reasons I'm hired as Operations Manager, to get rid of the stigma of an inspection service working with a community. I agree with the plan review. When I got here, they were mailing plans off, they'd send them, they'd come back two weeks later. You know, we've streamlined our plan review process, do electronic plan review, to be tracked in our community core, to know exactly where that plan review is at any time. You can look, have access to that, the client will get access to that, and the plan reviewer will get access to that, they can look at that. And they don't always have to go with Safe Build, they always have the option of going to the state. So if they say like, you know, Safe Build, I don't like their process, I'm going to go to the state. And the state just reviewed their process and they said, hey, congratulations, we updated our process, you can have your permit in five weeks. That's their update. We're returning plan review in 15 days on our first response. If it's conditionally approved, denied, or withheld, those are the three criteria that the state has. So, and we adopt the state's fee schedule, like you'd pay the same to go to the state as you would here. And then we still have to in turn pay the state a fee for doing their plan review. It's just a convenience to the municipality. We've, I've taken on that and we have streamlined that process. It goes through a single person, a pipeline, it gets dispersed, it gets reviewed, and everybody can view it at any point wherever it's at.
Do you have the opportunity for the architects to come in and meet with you for an initial consultation?
They could meet with our commercial building inspector, probably not the plan reviewer, they couldn't.
Okay, because that's one of the things that we can do with the state is, we're not quite sure of the interpretation of this, we'd rather have an approved interpretation so that we can design it properly the first time instead of risking it.
There's always communication with the plan reviewer, but taking, you know, if you had your plan reviewer was in Madison and maybe not the Waukesha office, would you, you could drive up to Madison and go speak with your plan reviewer. So sometimes the logistics don't work out there, but you certainly have the communication ability all the time with that plan reviewer to, you know, settle these details that come up.
Okay.
But David, given that, as he said, you don't have to use them. So if a developer like you comes to Germantown, you don't have to use their services. But we're still gaining their inspection services that's saving us money. So I would hate to throw out the baby with the bathwater if you don't like the commercial plan review fee schedule. If a developer, architect, doesn't have to use them, for me, this is, this would be a no-brainer. They can go to the state if they prefer, as you said, or they can use you. If they do use you, we get a 10% from their fee schedule. And we're taking the inspection services from Safe Build.
And let me ask-
And one last thing, it's a year. If any of us have a problem with their service, it's a one-year contract, so we can move on and go back to business.
So something I heard at the earlier meeting was, we have to change our status with the state. Do we have to become a certified municipality?
You have to become a delegated agent to be able to, and we will take care of that, we will take care of that paperwork to provide you with that status to do the same plan review as the state does as an agent.
Okay, so when I've encountered the other cities that you support, when I call them to ask what's the review process, you bring it here, we have it reviewed here, not telling us that Safe Build is the one reviewing them. It's a third-party outside entity that's doing the review. So when, when somebody outside the city, village, comes to you, Jeff, and says, okay, where do we go to bring our plans in? Oh, just bring your plans here, we have them reviewed. We don't realize that we have the option to go to the state because you got a third-party reviewer. So that may add to some confusion. We don't know, I've never known that I could supersede you and go to the state if I wanted to.
I think we're actually, we're superseding the state. The state's always the authority having jurisdiction. They have gave us, given us approval for that same jurisdiction. So the state is always the authority and they have submitted that authority to us like, you know.
Right, but as the outside architect, when I contact the city, I've never been informed that I don't have to use you. That's who they go through, I bring the plans into here, they have it reviewed, they talk to you. I don't, I don't get informed that if you don't want to go with Safe Build, you can go to the state.
We can always have that option available, that this is a convenience, this is a real convenience and to municipalities to have that turnaround and have it done, you know, with the, with Safe Build.
So as long as you're explaining it to the end user in that manner, that you have two choices, you can either go to the state or you, we can have it reviewed by our third party.
We could put that language in their application.
That, that would be helpful.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
And as far as these, these people that you talk to that were, you know, maybe disgruntled or didn't treat you in a kind manner or, you know, representative of Safe Build, that's my job and that's why I am here to, and I'm overseeing everybody in the state to make sure that we have a positive uplifting attitude and represent your village as we are them, as we are you. I take this very personally and I am in charge of making sure that this will be a seamless premier experience for you.
Trustee Zabel.
I just want to make sure I understand, if a set of plans comes in and the application is marked on there to say either send it to the state for review or have in-house review, which would be you, at that point in time, is the person who created it, the architects, whoever created the plan, are they given a name and a contact person so that if there's problems, they know who to get in contact with instead of calling here and they say, well, you got to call so-and-so or you have to go to Green Bay to get it reviewed or if you have to-
They're absolutely, in the portal of the community core, which is Safe Build's primary system for tracking and permits, there will be a portal in there for everybody to see the village realm group and the person that applied, where it's at and what process it's in.
So in other words, once you turn a set of plans in, you can go onto your website or a website, Villages or whatever, to see where that plan is now and at what stage it is?
Absolutely. And if someone wanted to go to the state, they didn't do any more work by, because they still have to fill out the same SPD 118 form, that's why we've adopted that. So they still have that same form, that's the form that the state uses. So if they say, hey, you know, I want to go to the state instead, they haven't done any more work to speak with us.
Then we can point that as part of our application process to make sure it's written as if everybody's aware of it.
Okay. Yes, we do. Further discussion. Village Attorney.
Just, I guess for the motion maker and the secondar, that includes the ability for me to make any changes. I just say that in this case because I know that there was some communication on Friday that I don't think changes anything, but I haven't really had a chance to review that back and forth and make sure that this is okay. So there may be some technical or minor legal changes that we might make. I just want to make sure that-
So you want to make sure that my motion stages the approval as long as the attorney agrees with final language?
Right.
That's, that was my motion and the intent of my motion.
This came through GGF earlier tonight?
Yes.
And the discussions involved on it were similar to what we hear now?
No, it was diff, it was a little bit different, we did not have a dissenting point. We knew the positives. I was more interested in the fee schedule and who's covering some of the numbers that are here. Because they have, and with their fee schedule, which is on page 30, I wanted to make sure that, because they say the municipality and consultant will review the municipal fee schedule and validate tables annually. I just wanted to make sure that the final approval of those fees were the village's, not the consultants and not just staffs. And I also wanted to make sure that the other agreements, the activities and meetings, hours, the $85 while they're supposed to be here and any after-hours or emergency, who's covering that dollar amount? So we may have to modify our schedules a little bit.
Maybe that falls more into item D.
No, actually, that's part of the contract here, I think.
Yeah, it's part of the main contract.
Further discussion on the motion to approve.
I think anything that brings better service to our customers and allows us to streamline that process or shorten the timeframe it takes for a review is a positive for all, not only for those within the village, but those that are coming to us for that service. And treating them as a customer, we should look to see which, in which manner we can provide that best service. I also like the idea that it's a one-year contract and we're not locked into a three-year contract along the same lines of what Trustee Wing had said.
Any other discussion? Then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None opposed?
We want to do roll call on that because it's a contract.
We can do a roll call. Roll call, please.
Trustee Zabel.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky.
Aye.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Wing.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
New business item D, Resolution 51-2020, adoption of the Wisconsin DSPS commercial plan review fee schedule.
Second.
Motion made and seconded discussion. Trustee Zabel.
And again, this only deals with the commercial plan review fee schedule and it coordinates it with the state dollar amount of what Dan has referred to. They will receive 90% of the fee and 10% will be brought back to the village. On the commercial land, on commercial plan review.
Further discussion? No further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Kaminsky.
Aye.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Wing.
Aye.
Trustee Zabel.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Next item under new business is item E, Resolution, I'm sorry, oh yes, Resolution 52-2020, Veridian Development Agreement for Veridian Homes LLC, agent for VHK LLC, property owner located at North 104 West 14942 Donjust Bay Road. located at North 104 West 14942 Donjes Bay Road.
Didn't, didn't have anything necessarily specifically planned. I can address the, the handful of comments from Ms. Miller's, um, email that I think all of you have and she went over as part of her discussion this evening as well, if that's all right?
That's fine. Village Attorney.
So with respect to the particular comments that were raised, uh, in, in her first question about what's public versus houses, uh, just real short, your public improvements are the water, sewer, the roads, those types of things. Private improvements would be the, the houses, their own landscaping, those types of things. Completion date is, I think, kind of the, the main hang-up from, from Ms. Miller's discussion. I will just skip down to the last one and say that, that yes, um, in 9.02, uh, the date in that paragraph should be 4/6 instead of 16. Obviously, I added a one there as we were, um, preparing that, uh, language. In essence, and we kind of discussed this last time and, and I, when I sent out the revised version, um, over the weekend here as well, I kind of said the same thing. Really, the, the goal, or at least the discussions have always been that the neighbors are concerned that we've now rezoned this property, what's to prevent Veridian from walking away from this development and then coming back and coming in with a development that now meets the new zoning, but is a lot more dense in terms of what's there. The way that we've always indicated that we would solve that is that once we are in a position where we have a developer's agreement and we have the ability to have the financial guarantees to complete the work, uh, that, once we're in that position, then we know that this is what's going to be constructed, because if it's not constructed, we have the right under the contract, we have the right under the security instruments to go in and to complete that work so that we know that 16 lots is what gets developed on this particular property. And that's what we've always looked to do as part of this. Now, when we look at the dates, the varying dates that are there, recognize that in 9.02, that's the, the one year from the Plan Commission or from this body's approval of the rezoning, that really related to the, let's get this thing in a position where we know that this is going to be locked in. It's, it's never been something that, um, at least staff has understood to be that, that, you know, they're going to be finished with the work, because quite honestly, that was never realistic. If, if anybody was thinking in April, when we approved this, that this subdivision was going to be completed by April next year, um, you were just wrong. It, it, there was no possibility at all that that was going to happen. And so what we do is, within the agreement, we have our standard dates that we use, which is to say that once you started your construction, um, you have one year from that date to complete the public improvements. And we've modified that a little bit in this case to say that it's based on one year of, assuming it gets approved tonight, it would be one year from tonight. That's the same as what we do with every other developer. It's the same, quite honestly, as what, you know, if, if you take out a building permit for your house, you have a certain time within which you're supposed to complete that construction as well. That is all consistent. We do then also have the same language that we have in every other development agreement, which is admittedly, um, you know, maybe, uh, a little bit meaningless in the sense that typically what we say is, is, once you start construction, you have a year and then you have to, you have to, uh, complete everything or to start everything within two years is our standard development agreement. If you don't start the work within the two years, then you forfeit your rights under the development agreement and you, you know, and that's the end of that. Now, in this case, as I say, we did change that. It does say that it is one year from the acceptance of the agreement by the village board as opposed to just one year from the start of construction. And so we did intentionally limit that to a point that, um, you know, is, is, is different from what we do with other people, but it's also something that is, at least in my opinion, a realistic timeframe, that if you approve it tonight, they should be able to get the public improvements completed within a year of, of tonight's action. And so that's kind of the difference in those dates. Hopefully, that kind of explains. And then the last comment that she had is, is just the comment about the default, um, which is, um, you know, kind of the same thing there. You know, the goal on, on default is that, you know, once they've started to work, you know, towards putting in the improvements, if they stop, we have the right to go in and complete those improvements. We know what the, you know, the neighbors know what they're going to get, one way or the other, once this development agreement is approved.
Chief, do you claim?
Oh, um, yes. So the, the other thing was, thanks, Steve, um, the, the status of the claim, um, to the extent that it matters, um, the, this board denied that claim back in October, I think it was, of 2019. And so we are now at a point where, um, you know, that, that realistically, they're past their time where they could take any action on that claim, so.
Trustee Baum.
Can you talk to the topic of this reverting back to A2 if something doesn't get done?
Uh, yes, that is section 9.02, uh, and that is, in essence, what I've just gone through the process of describing, which is to say that if the development agreement isn't in place and we don't have, uh, the, you know, appropriate financial guarantees to ensure that the work is done, uh, then at that one-year date, so April 6th of 2021, then the, the development agreement would be done and, and the property would revert back to its original zoning. Obviously, I don't think that that's going to take place. We will likely have the development agreement signed here within the next couple of days. And in my experience, both generally and with this developer and other communities, we'll probably have, uh, the bonds and, and letters of credit and everything else that we need, um, probably within two weeks. Usually, they turn it around pretty quickly. And, uh, you know, my guess is, is that they're probably going to look to start construction here on, on some of their stuff, um, probably even shortly thereafter, so.
Jeff, Director Retschloff, can you give us something on why these, this plan that we see tonight hasn't been revised? Where's the bridge? Where's the additional landscaping?
Yeah, the, the, in conversation with the developer after the board meeting, it was discussed whether or not we, we needed to go through the process of revising the plat versus simply plugging in a requirement in the development agreement for the pedestrian path and the bridge, which has been done in section 1.08, um, with the final plat reflecting that, that physical feature shown there, therein. You know, typically, you've got a preliminary plat and as long as the, the final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat, and in this case, we'll make sure that the items called for in the development agreement are reflected in the final plat, that, that's what will be recorded.
So you will be the one to ensure that the additional trees get put in that were asked for? The bridge finally gets put in? Or is that you?
Uh, it'll, it'll be both of us in, in some respect, but ultimately, it's you, because final plat approval comes here for approval. And so you guys will be able to, when all is said and done, look at, here's the, here, here's the preliminary plat that we saw when we approved it last, at the last meeting, here's what the conditions were, we added the walkway, we added the bridge, we added the trees, this is what we asked for, you've got final plat approval. That's-
This will come back to this board one more time. Or does it go to Plan Commission?
I see, Plan Commission.
Plan Commission first, then back to this board?
Right.
Okay?
For final plat? And that, all the lengthy discussions on trees, borders, walks, pond, size and, and shape, all that, uh, should be brought forward and looked at as far to that final plat review?
And that is the final approval?
That, that is the final approval of what would be considered the built-out subdivision and all the amenities that you've wished or conditions you've wished to put upon it?
And the tie to that is that they cannot build any building permits until that final plat is approved.
So even though we don't see that drawing today, it has to be done the way we've asked for it to be done and it still has to be brought, uh, brought back to the Plan Commission and to us.
Has to be done to our approval.
Right. So it's got to come back to both of us for final approval.
Um, no.
No motions? Trustee Hudson.
Two citizens have asked about the fill that's going on there now. I agree that they're not in compliance with their permit, just having walked by there every single day.
We do have the director of Public Works here, he can make comment to that, to that permit.
Thank you.
Mr. Ratacik. Can you come and speak on the, the fill permit, please, and what they're allowed and not allowed to be doing?
Um, in some way, I can, I don't have in front of me to look at it. I had been out to the site, um, you know, last, probably three weeks ago. At that point in time, they were abiding by the fill permit, their, their soap fence was intact, they had a tracking pad. The intent is that, um, that nothing would leave the site with the erosion control permit, that's what the erosion control permit is for. As far as the, um, the amount of fill, um, at that point, I'm going by memory, I don't have in front of me, I believe there was a quantity also in the erosion control permit. I'm going to say of 10,000 yards, something like that. They were, they were counting trucks and measuring, I didn't get a reply back. I didn't come prepared with that tonight, but I was given a quantity that they were, they were within, like, they were only about 30% to 40% of the allowed amount of fill to come to the site at that point. So the fill is coming in small loads, it's coming out of, from I'm told, um, excavations for houses and, and other developments that they have.
Is it supposed to all stay on lot two?
I remember it as being a quadrant of the site, the, the north, norly west quadrant of the, of the areas what I believe was supposed to stay in and they were doing that. It's, it, they're leveling the pile out, they're not building a ski hill.
They're, they're, I, I-
So the, the trick-
They're building a ski hill.
If, if I can, just real quick, the, the trick is, is that, and, and I have not seen the permit, it's not a permit that I ever look at, but I think I know the answer, which is that the legal description of the property as a whole, meaning all of the potential subdivision, is lot two of the previous CSM that split that off from the original parcel that it was. And so when we say lot two on that permit, my guess is, without looking at it, and I'm looking at it here now.
Lot two.
Um, yes, lot two of CSM 4473 would be lot two, meaning that full parcel, not lot two as in the little number of the proposed subdivision.
Thank you.
If it helps, some additional information, as, as things are moving along here, they have asked for a pre-construction meeting to be scheduled within the next week or so. They're, they're, they're looking at having a pre-construction meeting. Their plans have been sent to the DNR and to MMSD and VNR for Santer Sewer and Watermain approvals, so they are not sitting back on any approvals or waiting to get started. They do want to get started, I'm guessing, within the next month to two.
Thank you, Director. There was also some concerns about, uh, safety of, of residents in the area, children playing on, uh, on the piles or on the equipment. Mike, can you address any of that and, and what your officers see or have, might have done in regards to that area? And what, what would be your normal course of action for a construction site?
So can I expound upon that? There, there is a, there are ATVs driving all over that hill and again, there was today.
Where are they coming from?
Subdivisions directly around Kinderberg Park.
Is that site not posted, Larry, for private property?
No, it's not.
It has, the, the main sign is usually posted as no trespassing.
There, there is, the only markers that are up there now are the lot markers that have been up for approximately a month now and the trucks entering and leaving signs. There are no private property signs anywhere on there.
Is there a permit board posted?
There is not.
Is that surprising? Chief Snow.
I don't know if we, that we have-
I don't know that we've taken any complaints of, of children being on the hills or anything like that. Residents should certainly feel free to, to call us, it's a safety issue, we'll send an area squad over there and, uh, increase patrol in that area, the ATVs, um, can't be back there anyway, but I don't know that, we've taken ATV complaints, but not down in that area, so.
Further down?
Yeah.
Blank land that was in Donjes Bay?
So certainly, we would encourage residents to, uh, contact us as it's happening, we will certainly send a squad out there to investigate it.
These are, are kids? Trustee Hudson or?
Both.
Both?
Both. There's, there's dirt bikes and ATVs.
Is there not a construction fence around this?
There is no construction fence.
There's a soap fence.
Around the pile?
No, there's a, there's a driveway that anybody can walk or get into that was open until this weekend. I believe that they're done with the fill, they have moved rocks across, but you can easily skirt the rocks or drive over the rocks if you have the right kind of vehicle.
So there was also, if I can speak on, on the, the use of, of the equipment being climbing, um, there are, there aren't, there is no rules or laws that requires a construction site to be posted. If there's a hole in the ground, always should require you to safeguard that hole, either put plates over it, fence it off. We don't have a fall, we don't have a fall situation here. We have dirt in the machine that kids love to climb on. You have, if you're putting sewer down the road, over the weekend, I'm sure kids are going to try to climb on there or do something if their parents don't say get off. Uh, the other thing is, we just built Renwood subdivision, a year and a half of construction. We had none of these issues, no complaints of children climbing on equipment or ATVs going through that site.
Renwood's not next to a park.
Yeah, the park is just down the country.
Kinderberg Park?
And I just bring this up, for going forward, when the construction starts, there's going to be a lot of equipment out there. There's going to be, um, excavations left from installation of Santer Sewer, Watermain, Storm Sewer, that aren't, basements that aren't filled up every night to be re-excavated the next morning. They're, they're typically fenced up with the orange safety fence, um, around the whole hole to discourage people from getting into that and falling into the hole. But it's a construction site and, um, we can have the contractor posted, no trespassing. It just gives the police some, some levity to go out there and say you're, you're on someone else's property, um, but.
They are anyways, with or without the sign.
I'm just saying, what's going to happen coming forward, there will be a lot of equipment, there'll be a lot of piles of dirt, piles of stone and gravel, um, that'll all be happening out there once they start.
No, you didn't.
It was a different-
I'll, I'll admit I did too.
Don't turn out like me.
We don't have a-
Oh, man.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 52-2020.
There it is.
Second. And, and I guess, just, uh, with that one, I, I just, uh, Director Retschloff just handed me something, um, the, the same provision as we just talked about, subject to, uh, legal approval, like, for example, uh, we're noticing that on our exhibit D, which is the amount of the bond, um, some of the numbers need to be adjusted because we, like, we didn't include the cost of the path and the, uh, bridge, uh, as part of that, and there, there may be some duplication numbers and those types of things. So there may be some tweaks, um, to the, to the final, but nothing, uh, of a material nature at all.
I'll include that with my motion.
Larry?
Okay.
Whoever the second is. Either one of us is okay. All of us good.
Discussion. Trustee Zabel.
I may have misspoke, reading the building and occupancy permits, it doesn't seem to tie that to the final plat development, a final plat approval, it only ties it to putting the sewer and the water in the road and other improvements, and it's 202 of the agreement. I'm just wondering if we need to modify that to also include upon final plat approval so that we all get a chance to see the final landscaping and/or approval to make sure that they're done?
Well, so it's, it's, it's kind of the same thing that we just went through with our, our subdivision just down the road here, uh, which is, um, at the end of the day, they can't sell any of the lots until they get final plat. Most developers, uh- Um, most developers of subdivisions do, uh, come to, uh, the communities and ask for the ability to start, uh, once the utilities are, are in, uh, to, to be able to start their, uh, constructions so that they can start their, uh, model homes and those types of things. Um, and that's what that paragraph is really designed to do. They, they can't sell any of the lots, though, until they get that final plat approval.
So if they can't sell it, that means they can't give an occupancy permit. I mean, the village cannot grant an occupancy permit until the lot is actually sold, or can they? Well, you can build a house, you can build a house, I mean, can you, can a builder, build a home, a spectrum or whatever, move somebody into it?
No.
Without, without occupancy being granted.
Right, there's no building or occupancy permit shall be issued. Right, so the, typically, we wouldn't grant occupancy to the final user, meaning we wouldn't grant occupancy to, um, Jane Smith, who happened by the lot. We may grant occupancy for them to be able to, you know, stage the, you know, stage the home, or, you know, that type of thing. Um, typically are things that, um, you know, if, if there's significant disputes, just like there was with the subdivision just up the street here, um, those typically will come back if, if we're not able to resolve, um, those issues. Further discussion?
As long as I still have it, the other thing that we have here that seems to go on and on and sort of outdated, I think, and let me find it, but it's where they say they have to bring in the other utilities. I notice we still say that they have to bring in telephone. I don't know of anybody using landlines anymore.
Landlines can carry internet, though.
And that's what they say, but they have cable there. They have telephone and cable, they have to be brought in.
They have options.
Landlines are required for medical purposes, too.
But it's, the, the whole thing is, you're requiring the developer to, to provide those things and are they going to be used? I don't, I think it's sort of an outdated utility, and they are a private utility, not a public utility.
Right, I, I think the, the, the point of that paragraph, though, is just that, uh, the developer is the one that is responsible for all of those, uh, private utilities, whether it's gas, electric, telephone, cable, you know, some new utility that comes up, um, you know, whatever the case may be. Those are all his responsibility as part of the development. Further discussion? No further discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
No.
Trustee Wing?
Nay.
Trustee Zabel?
Nay.
Trustee Bob?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Nay.
Trustee Kaminsky? President Walter?
Aye.
Five, four.
Five, four. Motion passes. Next item under new business is police response to protests. With us tonight, we have Chief Snow to give us, uh, some information on, uh, the protests that occurred within Germantown, uh, over a week ago, and, uh, what his police department is doing in the interim. Chief Snow.
Uh, thank you, I'll give you a brief overview, um, dating back to August 7th. A resident reported, um, via their ring security that they received notification of, uh, vehicles driving on their lawn. Shortly after that, we received another call of approximately fifty vehicles entering the subdivision, honking their horns, yelling. Um, so a number of protesters did arrive in that area. Um, it was estimated initially to be about forty vehicles with a crowd of between sixty to eighty people. That number eventually came closer to sixty vehicles with a crowd of about 125 people. The only thing that we were, I guess, fortunate on that night was it happened at 10 o'clock, which is shift change for us. We had, uh, second shift officers, we were able to hang over to assist down there. Even with that, we had a total of nine officers to respond to this. Ultimately, the Sheriff's Department sent down another three officers to assist. So that whole, um, protest was basically handled with 12 officers. Um, the initial response was to basically see how this protest escalated. They set up a band in the middle of the street, um, with amplifiers, spotlights. They were using spotlights to shine back at the officers, making it difficult to see the crowd or to see what was going on. We do not think that was unintentional. Uh, we received reports of people urinating in yards, um, littering. It almost seemed like there was two factions out there, one that was more peaceful than the other. At some point, uh, the two groups almost became involved in a confrontation, um, when they started littering in a number of the yards. Our plan was to basically give them a deadline of when we were going to, to stop the protest. And I don't remember what, what time we set for that, but ultimately, at around 11:30, it appeared that one part of that group was starting to leave on their own. Our officers, our lieutenant did make contact of, uh, who he believes was one of the organizers, and that was a state assemblyman, uh, David Bowen, from, I, I can't remember what district he's from, possibly 10. He was cooperative, the lieutenant did point out a number of the ordinance violations. He said he was aware of that, that civil disobedience was part of what they were trying to accomplish with the protest. Ultimately, that group helped to clean some of the street up. Our officers ended up doing mostly to clean up that night, in the yards and, and in the street. We did look at a number of the citations that, that could have been issued, and potentially what, what our response could be through enforcement. And part of the issue that we struggle with is, as everyone knows, this is a period of civil unrest that we've not seen the likes of any time in the recent future, uh, past. We don't know what that does if we take a firm, a firm stance on enforcement. I, I think Tulsa has seen some of that, when they issued the, uh, the proclamation saying that they needed the permits for the, the protests, and the response the following day was more protests. Our goal was just to try to, um, monitor the situation, and as long as it did not become violent, to give them that deadline and let them leave peacefully, which, I, I absolutely agree with the resident spoke at earlier. It's not something that, that I would have called peaceful, nonviolent, I guess. But there was a lot of noise and commotion made as they exited the subdivision. But again, understand that this was a protest that we were not prepared for, that we had 12 officers, initially nine officers, to respond to. This last Friday, we received information, uh, via social media accounts that we are constantly monitoring, uh, different news outlets, that the protest from Tulsa was likely to move up to Germantown again. We did prepare for that, our plan was to, we left barricades out at the intersections, was to basically barricade, anyway, into the subdivision, of course allowing residents to come in. But at the point where we were notified that they were moving to Germantown, uh, the plan was to shut that down. We had 11 of our officers on duty, uh, county sent down 10 officers, West Bend had seven on standby. And of course, nothing showed up in Germantown that night. And then that's the problem with trying to anticipate what, what's going to happen with these protests, it's, is difficult to anticipate. And I think most likely, we were going to see our protests that show up when we're, when we're not prepared for them, which our response, depending on what time of day it was, if that call would have came in 15 minutes later, we would have had four officers responding to it instead of, instead of nine. Again, with a crowd of 125 people. So it's, I, I certainly agree with the residents, the violations were there. Noise, obstructing the street, unlawful assembly, parade permits that, that were needed that weren't obtained. But enforcing that and what that looks like when you start talking about First Amendment issues, that, that becomes a, a challenge, I think. And I don't know how that, that looks for us. So I, I, I think from our part, we are constantly monitoring, trying to anticipate when something is going to occur. Again, they're not bashful about posting this on Snapchat, Instagram, on public forums. So we are getting information that way. It's, some of it is not entirely reliable, though, of course, and, uh, we're, we're doing kind of best, best guess scenarios in most, most cases.
Trustee Zabel?
In this case, where you would be out there, all the citations would be municipal citations, right?
I think the potentially only stable would be unlawful assembly, maybe, I, I think that would be a.
But yeah, I mean, I, it ultimately depends on the, the particular circumstances of the case. I mean, certainly I could contemplate plenty of actions that protesters might take that may result in criminal versus just a, a typical municipal ticket, but by and large, most of the things, you know, noise violations, those types of complaints, uh, would likely be municipal citations.
Would that be similar, then, to a driving ticket or a speeding ticket or anything else you could issue? Have a person saw you and ID and issue them a ticket and handle it and say, hey, it's open court on the third Wednesday of the month, here's your ticket.
Yeah, and, and we certainly could handle it that way, again, the, the one that showed up last Friday, I think our officers were more in a mindset of doing anything possible, not, for this not to turn violent, especially with the numbers that, that we had out there. We are, um, looking at license plates and doing follow-up that way to see if we can make identification of people that were out there. Again, we did identify one of the, uh, what we think is an organizer of the, of the protest. We are just discussing, uh, you know, whether or not to proceed with the citations at this point.
I, I think, as was said tonight, if you, if you leave things go and hopefully things remain calm and nobody gets hurt, but if for some particular reason, a particular situation evolves and somebody does get hurt, you can't go back, so if you leave them do and go ahead with things without giving them any type of restriction, I do like the idea of you putting out the barricades and hopefully they don't come back to the area. But in the meantime, they're probably going to take and blow their horns and drive all the way around, waking everybody else up.
And, and to be clear, and moving forward, our concern is to try to identify organizers and confront them immediately. That was the plan for this past Friday, where if they parked vehicles and walked onto that, um, section of the subdivision, I was immediately going to approach them and announce that they were in violation of several, several ordinances, and that we would take enforcement action, so that is certainly is, uh, is the plan. As I said, though, the Friday, that one just never materialized.
What, what about any future mandations? Does it appear that people have posted things in newspaper and other places that somebody's going to be coming out on the, either the 28th or 20, 22nd of this month and and more of a direct protest to other things that are happening?
Yeah, we have seen the one on the 20th by a group that, um, they have been in other jurisdictions and, and actually have been much more peaceful and are basically staying on right away and not going into the streets as much of that group. Um, in the past, they have contacted the municipalities directly, I have not been contacted by, by anyone.
Nobody's applied for a permit to assemble? Nobody's applied for a permit for?
They, they have not, not, not for the 20th.
How many days does it take to turn a permit around?
Yeah, we, we did have, there was one request for a permit for a protest earlier this year, uh, by a group of, uh, students from the high school, that we did process and approve, and, and that was a, um, about a two-week period of, of planning and, and working together, and, and there was, uh, you know, a focus on making sure that both the people who were participating in the protest and other bystanders were safe. And, uh, and I think that, 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 that turned out to be, uh, an event where we were able to secure the safety of, of, of everyone who was involved.
Because I know with Germantown is a concealed, we allow carry here, but I'm, I was told there were a few people that were demonstrating, they did have weapons.
There were, on, on Friday, the previous Friday, there were a number, we estimated four or five of kind of what they're calling their security, were open carry.
But that's legal, so.
It's, and that's what I'm saying, it is legal, it's the fact that they were there, but they, they assumed them to be their security?
That was basically how they were described to us, that they kind of are their.
Were they watching for people going onto lawns and other stuff, or?
And that, that was where part of the, um, altercation happened, once one of the groups started to throw litter onto the other lawn, then I don't know who it was, but part of the group started to get upset with them and tell them to knock it off. And nonetheless, there was significant amount of litter and different things left at the location.
And what is the best way that if somebody becomes aware of something going on, to who should they, is there a person or a contact person that they should?
Yeah, they should contact the on-duty supervisor, so that we know, know immediately.
So you're on for the shift commander, the lieutenant?
Yep, the lieutenant, and there's always a lieutenant assigned to each shift, so they, all they need to do is ask for the lieutenant on duty and, and report that as soon as possible. And then we can try to coordinate, um, resources as best we can, the sooner we know, obviously, the, the better, so that would be helpful.
So each, each shift does have a lieutenant that is there and handles the control of officers?
That is correct.
So when, when they were to call the, uh, not the 911, but the, the, the red line to the police department?
Not emergency.
Not emergency, uh, just ask for the shift commander or the lieutenant on, on job?
Yep.
Okay.
Village Administrator?
I'm good. I guess I, I just wanted to point out, um, and I've been, uh, able to observe a, a number of the protests by these same groups in, in Wauwatosa. The Wauwatosa Police Chief lives in Germantown, the Germantown Village Administrator lives in, in Wauwatosa. So I, uh, and I, I happen to live two blocks away from, uh, Mayor McBride's house, where some of, some of these protests have been, have been going on for several months now. And, uh, and just as I've observed, and my observations for what they're, they're worth, is that, the, uh, the protests, as they've continued, are, they're, they're a nuisance. There's cars honking, there's, you know, they, they come by, uh, my house probably once a week. And, uh, but it has gotten to the point, my kids don't even notice when they, when they go by anymore. Uh, it's become just a, a little bit of the routine. What I saw happen over the, this past weekend, where, uh, because some of the protests in other areas of Wauwatosa did escalate, uh, and the mayor issued an order, um, within, uh, that, that order took effect at midnight of, I believe, Thursday night, and at 12:15, the cars were honk, 12:15 AM, the cars were honking and coming into the neighborhood, and they did for three nights in a row afterwards. I saw from the newspaper that, that Wauwatosa made two arrests, and seeing there were a, a large number of police officers. It took a lot of resources and planning and organization to have that many officers available to confront a group of that size and arrest two individuals. And, you know, it's just as we talk about the response, and, and there is, uh, you know, certainly a lot of, a lot of my neighbors as well have some of the same feelings and, and fears and apprehension. But it's, it's, it's not something with a normal shift of four people or even on a double shift that, that you can safely do. Safe, safely for the officers, safely for the, the neighbors and, and other residents, so. You know, I, what I've also seen is, is up until that, that, that order came down, the, the demonstrations were becoming fewer and farther between, the numbers were growing smaller, and, and people seemed to be losing interest. And that's not saying that anything is, is right or wrong, but that's, those are the observations of, of what I've seen, and. of what I've seen, you know, firsthand in Wauwatosa and my neighborhood.
You bring up a good point, and it was brought up earlier by this lady here, who said, do we need to start forming groups to help the police department, to help try to control? I mean, you have your police aides and you have other people, do you need local citizens in other words to help you out, or you're involved in that?
You know, and other communities have tried that, and it does not always work to our advantage. Sometimes what happens is you get the groups of counter protesters, is what it turns into, and then there's always a confrontation when that happens. And that's why, especially for that first protest, we were trying to see if they were going to disperse on their own, if we just gave it a little bit of time. And I know it was more time than residents would have liked, and I agree, I understand, it was my neighborhood, I'm upset too, believe me. But given the resources available, we thought that was the best.
I'm just wondering, now that we know that these civil unrests are occurring, would it be advisable to start a training program, or something where you could train a group of people, or train citizens to help out? Similar to what you do with the police aides and the police academy type of thing?
And I think that would be more of a function that we could work with the Citizens Police Academy on, but especially with the protesters, they want confrontation right now. So I would be reluctant to use volunteers in that scenario, just because they're looking for that confrontation, they want something that's going to make the press, and I think it ends up being a liability for us. I think the best thing the citizens can do is, you know, keep us aware, stay in contact with us and let us know when they see, hear, information that they might receive on the social media, there's a lot of different things they can do to stay involved, to help us in that regard.
Do you have a list of all the people that have, like the Ring or other cameras in the area, similar to what I think Menominee Falls has done, that where they've listed the people?
We actually, and it's, we would only have available, we have access to the Ring network, but we would only have people that voluntarily register. There's some people we just don't want, people don't know if they have security cameras. But people that would voluntarily register, we would have access to the names of those people that have Ring cameras.
I'm just wanting to help to identify maybe some of the bodies of people that were there.
And I think it does, and I think we did put something out too, that in that network, that basically to check your cameras, if you have any footage, it's going to help us to let us know, so that would have went out to anybody who's registered on that site would have got that email.
I think it's safe to say that a lot of residents are frightened. A lot of residents haven't seen this ever in their lives, or others haven't seen it since the late 60s, in a different manner and a different scope. But I think what they want to hear is that our police are actively looking for this type of action and monitoring everything they can to see if it's going to occur and what they can do to stop it or deter it, once they have a confirmation that it's going to be happening in our area, and that there is a plan in place and actively being looked at daily and worked on, so that if it does occur, the public safety is the first concern, so there isn't a big altercation or violent action occurring. And secondly, that it is monitored while it happens, so that the safety of the public is always kept at hand.
Yes.
And we certainly still have our smart response, which is a county-wide response, that we can quickly have, given number of resources, respond almost immediately.
We have not needed to use that yet, we have been able to pre-plan it, and the day that we did have it on Friday, we were in contact with all area jurisdictions who said if it did escalate, they would send resources immediately.
Further questions? No further questions? Okay, appreciate it, chief, thank you. Thank you for sharing the information. Next item of new business is Item G, discussion of Hildebrand claim. The village board may convene in a closed session per Wisconsin statutes 19.85 subsection 1, sub-paragraph G, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel, who is rendering advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the village with respect to litigation in which it is involved or likely to become involved, and then may reconvene in the open session to take such action as it deems appropriate.
I make a motion to go into closed session.
Include the librarian?
Yeah. Yes. Anybody else?
Village attorney, Dana, you don't need to stay.
Okay, village administrator, village attorney, and village librarian.
Okay, motion made, did I get a second?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded, discussion? All those in favor will do roll call vote, please.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Zabel?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Before we go into closed session, the next regular meeting of the village board will be on September 21st at 7:00 PM here at the village hall boardroom. Thank you all for coming tonight, and thank you all for watching. Good night.